We'll call the meeting to order for the Willmar City Council on Tuesday, September 4th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmeus.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? The only one I have been brought forward is the City Hall air quality testing proposal. Is there anything else that we're going to move forward? Staff? Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. Next are the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, for council's approval is the City Council meeting minutes of August 20th, Willmar Municipal Utilities Board minutes of August 27th, Planning Commission minutes of August 15th, Application for exempt permit for the Barn Theater, a resolution accepting project number 1701B, an authorized final payment in the amount of $208,784.62, and for council's acceptance, the Police Commission minutes of May 24th, Central Community Transit Operation Board minutes of June 26th, Willmar Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of June 19th, Human Rights Commission minutes of June 19th, and the accounts payable August 16 through the 29th of 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Councilmember Osmeus.
Could I pause the 1701B final payment?
Yep. Anything else? With the exception of item 5E, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, the councilmember Osmeus in regards to item 5E.
Okay. I know that the majority of this project is all about the replacement of the infrastructure underneath the roads, but the thing that's going to affect homeowners is what I've been receiving calls on is the grass issue and the replacement of the grass. And I've addressed this a couple of times with Mr. Christensen over the summer, and I did have one of the residents on 17th Street that said that Bolton and Mink and whoever it was that they had subcontracted with never did come back to address the grass issue. They ended up pulling the weeds, putting down their own black dirt, seeding it themselves. And so his concern today was, yes, he took care of his, but I think some of the residents were still waiting to see what was going to happen after it was all done. And I just thought, before we totally pay this off and there's no more accountability to not have to receive any payment, are those homeowners going to get their grass issue?
Mr. Holland?
Well, I think we can certainly do that. And you know, we always have a retainage on every project, but you're right, before we do the final payment, if we have any outstanding issues, and I'm glad you're bringing that up to my attention, and you know, I will not sign it until I'm sure that everyone has been addressed. And I know that grass in particular, you know, it can be a tricky thing, just like a lot of driveways. I've had to go back, you know, sometimes a year later and redo someone. So if we have, if Mr. Christensen has that information, I will get with him. If he doesn't have those name and addresses, if he will forward those to me, then we will investigate that before we close it out.
Okay.
I guess what I was hearing is that it's that whole area down there, one property owner took care of it themselves. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
And the rest of them all still have a concern. So should we approve this, or should we hold off on approving this final payment? Mr. Scott, or Mr. Holland?
You can go ahead and approve it pending, you know, my approval of it and, you know, my investigation. That's what I would say. It's sort of like sometimes pending, you know, the attorney's review of the documents. So let me, I would say approve it tonight pending, you know, I will sign it once I've satisfied with the homeowners.
Okay. Mr. Christensen, you good with that?
Yep.
Councilmember Osmeus, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. I know I've received quite a few calls in this last year, but I haven't received any this year yet, so. Okay. Would you like to introduce that?
Yes.
Who's the resolution?
Move to the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, councilmember Alvarado.
Are you going to amend it so it would, pending Mr. Holland's approval? Okay. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is a series of public hearings. I'll open the first public hearing, which is on special assessments for unpaid weed grass mowing removal charges. Ms. Thompson.
Mayor members of the council, at the August 20th council meeting, the council agreed to conduct a public hearing for unpaid weed grass mowing removal charges pursuant to the Willmar Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Article 3, concerning the cutting of weeds and grass. And in the case of noncompliance, the costs can be certified as a special assessment against a property concerned, and the city has the authority to certify as special assessments those costs, not reimbursed. Notice of tonight's hearing has been sent to the listed property owners. The council should consider their objections and take appropriate action.
Anybody here from the public that wishes to speak to this agenda item? Seen in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the special assessments for unpaid weed grass mowing and removal charges. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we'll have a public hearing on special assessments for unpaid nuisance and general removal charges. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Ms. Thompson?
Mayor members of the council, at the August 20th council meeting, the council agreed to conduct a public hearing for unpaid nuisances and general removal charges for two properties. Since then, one of the property owners has paid the charges in full pursuant to Willmar Municipal Code, Chapter 9, Article 1, concerning removal of a hazardous building. Such work to be performed by the city or its agent, the costs can be certified as a special assessment against a property concern, and the city has the authority to certify as special assessments those costs, not reimbursed. Notice of tonight's hearing has been sent to the listed property owner, and the council should consider the objections and take appropriate action.
Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Seen in hearing none, I'll close and bring it to the council table. Council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve special assessments for unpaid nuisances and general removal charges. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, I'll open a public hearing on ordinance authorizing the sale of real property to the state of Minnesota. Mr. Peterson, our planning and development director. Got it right tonight.
Tonight. Mayor Calvin, members of the council, before you tonight is the, hopefully, the final step in transferring property to the state of Minnesota. State of Minnesota has requested that the city convey to it a small remnant parcel off of Transportation Road for the purposes of developing a community-based adolescent mental health facility. This is a parcel that was segmented and severed years ago due to the shape and the construction of Transportation Road. It amounts to, I believe, approximately a quarter of an acre of land, and for the city's purposes, is totally unusable. There's no issues that have been identified with this transfer. Again, the proposal is to transfer it to the state for a dollar. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seen in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, move it to the council table.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sale of real property to the state of Minnesota, the amount of a dollar. Discussion, councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I was asked today where the location of this property was, and I know it was in our previous. It says it's attached, but it isn't attached to this document, the drawing. I think we had it last time. I'm just wondering if we can make sure that it's attached to the minutes.
Sure.
Is that okay?
I'll work with Judy to make sure it gets in.
Okay, because I helped them figure out what property it was based off from the other, but it should be, it says it's attached here and it's not.
Okay. My air.
Just some discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
Mr. Peterson, now, when they go to put the plan together for the building, you'll review that to make sure there's adequate parking and all those details?
We've already seen the site plans, and they are well in compliance with city regulations for parking, access, all the critical issues. This was a preliminary plan that they have us review in the course of the entire process. We will be getting formal site plans and civil drawings and formal building plans from the state at a later date, because they're planning a early spring groundbreaking.
Okay, so there won't be any street parking? It'll be all on the grounds?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe transportation drive or transportation road is signed for no parking, so unless it's signed, people are free to park there. But there's certainly adequate off-street parking being provided for the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our action is to adopt the ordinance for sale of sale or transfer of property to the state of Minnesota, assign it a number, and publish it. Roll call.
Do you want to close the hearing?
I'll close the public hearing.
Sorry.
I thought I closed the public hearing, brought it to the council table.
You made the motion, yeah.
Close the public hearing. Bring it to the council table. Council?
Move to approve.
Second.
We did that already.
Yeah.
That's what I thought too, but staff didn't get it, I guess, so. So the motion's been made and seconded, we've had the discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmeus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Just as an aside, the word we've gotten is that this facility will exceed $6 million in construction costs, so it'd be a nice addition.
Thank you. Next, I'll open a public hearing, an ordinance to rezone land from agriculture to our four medium-density multifamily residential. Mr. Peterson?
This is the item that was pulled from the agenda, to the best of my recollection. The developer that was purchasing the property has some other discussions going on with another potential buyer for a portion of the property, so they wanted to withdraw the rezoning request at this time. So there is no need to hear the matter for the council.
I think because we posted it as a public hearing, we have to call it to order, so. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Seen in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council? There's no action required because the application has been withdrawn. Next is open a public hearing for an ordinance replacing ordinance number 2.023, known as the subdivision ordinance. Ms. Anderson.
She has a new name.
I do have a new name.
Yeah.
That's okay, though. I've called myself that several times today.
So what should we call you now, then?
Mrs. Swedberg.
Ms. Swedberg.
Yes.
How are you doing?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, the wedding was on Sunday, so.
In here you wash.
There was another staff member that got married on Friday.
Friday, yeah, both of us saras.
Yeah.
Something in the water.
Yeah. I don't know, councilmember Fagerly was dancing quite well on Friday night, so.
Very good. Mayor members of the council, before you tonight, we have the public hearing for the 2018 revisions of the subdivision ordinance. This particular ordinance will revoke number 2.023, which was last adopted in 1964. Purpose of this, Bruce has mentioned before, a lot of the procedures and things are still very accurate, but there's definitely some language updates that needed to happen, and we've added a couple key new sections, and those I'll highlight in the presentation before you. So we'll just go ahead and get started. Subdivision ordinance allows the city to set standards for new or redevelopment for the safety, health, wellness, and functionality of the community. It specifically regulates lots, public areas and parks, streets and street lighting, installations for necessary utilities, which is just very common for a subdivision ordinance. The two new sections that I mentioned include minor subdivisions and park dedication, and we'll go over the details of that in just a bit. So this, the new version that you have in your packets tonight is a bit different than what you saw at the last council meeting. Robert went through and reformatted everything so that it can be codified and put into the municipal code right after it's approved. And so for that, there's just some different sectioning. There's no substantial differences in the actual content. It's just titled a little bit differently. So with this new formatting, there's four divisions, and we'll just go division by division. So number one is generally. We start with the short title, which just says that this is the subdivision ordinance of the city of Willmar. And then we go into section two, which is general provisions. Purpose. Basically, we just made bullet points instead of it being a long, lengthy, hard-to-read paragraph. Jurisdiction, just minor language changes to kind of tighten up and make that a little bit cleaner. Clarifications of certificate of survey in the application of the ordinance. This is on page, this section is pages one through six. Application, we just specified that divisions of land, and this is the same from what it was in the past, divisions of land in tracks larger than two and a half acres and exceed 150 feet in width. Where no new street is involved, all of those divisions are excluded from the requirements to be platted. Anything smaller than that requires, kicks it into that subdivision ordinance process and then continues from there. Otherwise, everything requires the certificate of survey. Approval is necessary for the acceptance. There really wasn't any changes. It has to be approved by Planning Commission and City Council as staff moves through that process. Applicable findings, that was a new section. Megan DeShepper had actually started this process back in about 2003, and the amendments and changes just never got finished. And so this was a section that she had actually added in it. It kind of reflects some different applicable findings that have to be found for other processes, like the conditional use permits at the Planning Commission level. So basically, these findings of fact have to be made in order for the plat to be approved. And there's about seven of them there. And that's on pages two and three. Definitions, there were some minor additions, minor subtractions, nothing substantial. Just making sure that everything that was actually in the ordinance was reflected that needed to be in there. We added things like minor subdivision, as that's a new section and a new definition. Sections 14-103 and 104 are reserved for future purposes. And with that, we move on to Division 2. We've got minor subdivisions, major subdivisions, and then the data required in both of those. So minor subdivisions, this is, we'll kind of camp out here for a little bit. Pages 6 through 8, this was a completely new section that you see in a lot of other cities. It really helps sieve dividers and developers to speed up the process of getting a plat on things that are minor. So in our particular case, state statute kind of gives, leaves it up to us how we want to define and set those minor subdivision requirements. And so for us, we decided that the minor subdivision results in no more than four lots, no new streets or utilities. Design standards and easements are provided as necessary, and no review is needed by the state, DNR, or the county. And with that, if, as long as all of those requirements are met, then we can go forward with the procedure. It requires review by the Planning Commission, and then it will be put on the consent agenda for the council. And it will be consolidated, so it'll only go through that process once, unlike the major subdivisions where you see the preliminary plat go through, and then you'll see the final plat come through later. And in this case, it just, it helps speed up that process for those developers. If it's, you know, if there's a person who has two lots and they want to create three instead of those two, it's a perfect example. There's a lot of space in between two houses, and they want a third house in there, or something like that. There is the possibility that Planning Commission holds a public hearing, but it's not required. I believe it's not required for this process. Yeah. Yep, which helps speed up that process again, and it just requires less notification to the Planning Commission.
Excuse me?
Yep.
Is there any way that that minor subdivision can be abused, or what?
Staff has pretty close oversight to it, so we have to give that stamp of approval before they can move through that process. And it's kept really close. It's still seen by Planning Commission, it's still seen by staff. It's not, it's, while it's a sped-up process, it's not just rushed through and things are missed. It'll still be reviewed by everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Major subdivisions, that all pretty much stayed the same. They require preliminary plat, final plat, and that's another thing to note for minor subdivisions. The plats are still required. Some cities only require certificate of survey, but we want that full plat to still be created for minors as well. With the majors, we did note that they can do, that depending on the size of it and the ease of it, sometimes we see, and you'll see it currently, what we call the consolidated major subdivision, which is when you see both the preliminary and the final plat, you do that approval at the same time. So that's still possible for a subdivision that doesn't fit in the minor category, but really doesn't need that full, double review either. This kind of helps just show what preliminary plats versus final plats look like. There's a lot more detail that you'll see on the preliminaries with current buildings and existing structures, streets and different things like that versus that final plat, where you'll see kind of just the final dimensions and then that certificate on the side that's signed by everyone as well. Requirements. We move on. So Sections 14, 112 through 118, design standards, park dedication, basic improvements, registered land surveys, all of that jazz. Huge shout-out and thank you to surveyors and the engineering department. They were really the ones who did all of these changes and updates to the technical pieces that were required for this. And that's really, those are the big changes that you'll see in these sections, is just updates to those numbers and those specific design standards. Park dedication, that's new. As the city really values their parks, we want to make sure that those parks continue to be provided as we expand and grow and develop the city. So because of the park master plan that was put into place and because of goals in the comprehensive plan, we have the backing to create this section in the subdivision ordinance. So the park dedication has seven sections there, as you'll see. Basically, what it boils down to is in any residential area, 7% of the land being developed must be dedicated to park development or open space, public space, and 4% for commercial and industrial spaces. That also allows, we also allow for a cash-in lieu. And then there's a payment plan. If a developer chooses not to specifically dedicate land, they can, they can give the city compensation in cash. And then that per state statute can specifically be used for acquisition and improvement of land for parks, playgrounds, conservation or other open space areas. No funds can be used for ongoing operation or maintenance of existing parks or recreational facilities or sites. And that's specific to state statute, so that we, in our minds, that money is used for things like acquisition of trail land or something like that.
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
So the land that we were looking at rezoning, that we didn't have the public hearing on?
Mm-hmm.
We did, but what kind of percentage then would have gone to park?
It would depend.
The 7%?
Yep, it would be the 7%, but that wouldn't kick in until it's actually platted. So when a, when a, when a development is platted, that's when that 7% would be dedicated. But in this case, if it was all residential, then 7% of that net developable area would be required to be dedicated, or the cash.
And it'd be up to the developer which land he wanted to?
Mm-hmm, yep. And the park dedication section lays out a land suitability specifically to avoid the city being dedicated land that just is not suitable for open space or public use. So we evaluation of adequacy of proposed park, playground, conservation, or open space areas, the city shall consider factors including size, shape, topography, geology, hydrology, tree cover, access, and location. So we're looking for land, while it is up to the developer where it is, they do need to meet certain criteria, and it does need to be approved by the city prior to that dedication.
So we could make them donate land, then, instead of just paying?
That, that part is up to the developer. And they can do a combination, they can do all dedication, they can do all cash, or they could, or they can do that combination.
Because there's no park up in that area.
Right.
It's closed right now, so.
Right.
All right.
And if, you know, if the developer chose to do the cash, the city could choose to take that cash and acquire land in that general area to create a park up there. It just wouldn't necessarily be exactly where that development happened. Basic improvements, really the only large change here was that we took out the option of the city financing any of those obligations of the developer, which was per the attorney's request. And in speaking on the staff level, we felt that that reflects what happens currently anyway. It is the developer's obligation to provide those basic improvements to the area that they choose to develop. Other than that, just again, minor changes. The, there were a couple pieces that we shifted from obligation of city to obligation of developer, again, because that's what they're obligated to do currently. So we just wanted that to be reflected accurately. Registered land surveys and conveyance and meets and bounds. Basically, this section just says we want it to be platted. It's more accurate, it's cleaner, it's easier to keep track of everything. And then we've got that plat record rather than the lengthy meets and bounds, difficult descriptions to read. Administration and enforcement, the last section there. Just again, minor changes. Variances are at the Planning Commission authority. That doesn't go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. Updating language to make sure that that undue hardship is the Updating language to make sure that that undue hardship is the, is the language used as court cases and different things have used. Compliance, building permits can't be issued until the subdivision ordinance is complied Violations and penalties, again, minor changes, there really wasn't a whole lot that we touched unless this is pretty accurate to what, what happens. Basically, follow, follow the ordinance, do what it says. And then the only change, we did add in the schedule of fees and charges into, specifically into this ordinance. So in the future, if it needs to be updated, it would simply be an ordinance amendment. And again, that was per city attorney request. So the old fees, I did list them on there for you. Subdivision was three hundred dollars minimum with a twenty-five dollar per lot fee. So you would have to have more than, more than twelve lots to go above that three hundred fee, and then for the replat, more than seven lots that you're replating to go above that three twenty-five. We've changed it, we've increased it, really to cover city costs between public hearings for the notices and the mailings that have to happen, especially as you start to get into those larger subdivisions and more people have to be notified and mailed and descriptions get lengthy, making sure that all of those, those costs are covered. And the reflection, kind of the tier is really by the intensity of number of public hearings and staff time that has to be gone through and all of that. And that's what I have for you. So it is staff recommendation, there's several things, several actions. We recommend that the council amend the ordinance to incorporate the formatting changes, and then we recommend that they adopt the ordinance as amended, assign it a number and publish it by summary.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this? Seen in hearing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it to the council table. Council?
Who approves staff's recommendation, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
What's been made and seconded to approve staff's recommendation? Do you have additional, Councilmember Christensen?
I was just going to say to make sure it's in the, she said publication by summary.
Yep.
It's such a long ordinance.
And that was included in the packet as well, that summary that would be published.
Okay. Discussion, Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, on page seven, it talks about the, I think we're talking here about the minor subdivisions. The Planning Commission has the authority to approve and deny, et cetera, et cetera. Is that still subject to the council approving the Planning Commission minutes? Is that correct?
Yep, yep. So the, the Planning Commission can approve or deny, make their decision, it still has to come and be approved by the council, and the council can always overturn their decision should they choose to deny it.
So can we do this all in one motion, or does it take two? Mr. Scott?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, I would recommend two motions. The first motion being to amend the ordinance to reflect the formatting changes made. Second, second motion being to actually adopt it, assign it a number and publish it by summary.
Okay, so I would say the first one has been introduced?
I'll introduce the first one to amend the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, so, so amending the ordinance has been?
To incorporate the formatting changes made by the certification purposes as included in our packet.
Okay. Discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Pagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next, I entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended, assign it a number and publish it by summary. What's been made and seconded, discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Pagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
I don't know if you got the motion, it was by Plowman, seconded by Christensen, did you get that?
No, I didn't, thank you.
Anybody here for the public forum? Seen in hearing none, we'll go on to the proclamation of Celebrate Art, Celebrate Coffee. Ms. Thompson is going to read this. I did attend their ceremony that they had last month, it was very well attended. The arts are very important to Wilmers, as we all know, and it was a very pleasurable day. And for those of you that haven't attended that in the past, I'd strongly encourage you to attend. A lot of the great things that happen in our community around the arts come through our Arts Council, and Celebrate Art, Celebrate Coffee is just one piece of those, so. Ms. Thompson?
Proclamation reads, whereas music, theater, dance, poetry, painting and other forms of fine art are important to the residents of Wilmers, Kanuai County and our region, and whereas regional people have fond memories of Wilmers coffee heritage, and whereas special events benefit our community and the people residing here, and whereas Wilmers Area Arts Council volunteers have worked diligently to provide this fine arts event in our downtown, now therefore be it resolved that I, Marv Calvin, Mayor of the City of Wilmers, to hereby proclaim September fifteen, twenty eighteen, Celebrate Art, Celebrate Coffee days in Wilmers, and encourage all citizens to visit our downtown and attend the festivals activities in witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Wilmers to be affixed. Marv Calvin, Mayor of Wilmers.
Thank you very much. And just so that the public is aware and the council's aware that that event has been moved inside Kennedy School, so it'll be at Kennedy School. The proclamation was written before they had moved it. They moved, I think, last week, so in the proclamation it states downtown, and I just wanted to clarify that, so. Next, we have the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Report, twenty eighteen legislative session and activities. And I'll have Councilmember Nelson introduce Bradley. Councilmember Nelson is the vice chair for the coalition. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I know he's passing some things out, but Bradley is here tonight, and he is the executive director for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I've had the privilege of serving on their board for, I don't know how many years now?
Several.
Several years, yes. And Bradley has, has been in this position, I think, two years now. He's been a lobbyist and an attorney with Flaherty and Hood for ten, I had the year down here.
Might be twelve, actually.
Twelve years, we'll take that, so. But I will let you go through your presentation, I just want to say thank you for coming out here today. You do a great job, and the Coalition does a great job for Greater Minnesota. And so I'm pleased to have him speak tonight, and I would encourage you all to get out your calendars and look at the fall conference that's coming up in Alexandria to see if you can attend, and I think Bradley will share with some information about that, so. Thank you, Bradley.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Again, my name is Bradley Peterson, here with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. As you know, the firm of Flaherty and Hood represents the Coalition at the legislature and does the organizational management for the Coalition. And so every year, we try to get out and visit as many of our cities as we possibly can to give you a sense of what happened during the legislative session, what our role in it was, what we prognosticate for the future, and then also give you an opportunity to ask any questions or share any concerns that you might have. So as I'm going along, please don't hesitate to interrupt, jump in, however you want to proceed is fine, and I will definitely try to be succinct, although we do have a lot of information to, to share. First off, a brief refresher on the Coalition. As you know, we focus on five issue areas at the legislature, specifically from a Greater Minnesota perspective. It's local government aid and property taxes, economic development, annexation of land use, transportation, and then environmental regulatory and funding issues. We're close to a hundred cities in the Coalition. When I started twelve years ago, we were at about sixty-eight. So in terms of sheer numbers, we have been growing and we continue to grow. So going into this legislative session, it was a short session, however, one with a significant to-do list. The short session, which follows the, the budget year, is typically focused on policy issues and a capital investment bill. There was significant focus and discussion this year at the legislature on the state response to the federal tax changes at the end of twenty seventeen, and trying to accommodate and align Minnesota's tax system with the federal changes. There was also a need for a significant bonding bill. A couple of years ago, the legislature sort of tripped over itself on the way to passing a bonding bill, they passed a large one in twenty seventeen, and then to kind of get back on schedule, needed to pass a large one in twenty eighteen. There was a supplemental discussion of a supplemental budget bill, there was a three hundred and twenty-nine million dollar surplus, which while three hundred and twenty-nine million dollars sounds like a lot of money, really in the greater grand scheme of state government, it is not that much necessarily. And there was also significant work on a, on a pension bill this year. So lots of obstacles, though, to a smooth session. You had bad blood as a result of Governor Dayton's twenty seventeen veto of the legislative operating funds, and so that was something that they needed to deal with right away once they got into session. There was a lawsuit over the summer, lots of back and forth. You had a razor-thin majority for the GOP in the state senate, which makes passage of bills difficult. And trust me, there was a health watch on every member of the senate GOP, because if there was one not there, they could not get anything done. And so at the end of session, a lot of rumor was, oh, who's going to be there? Who's got to go to a graduation? How are they going to get anything done this Saturday? Makes things very difficult when you have thin majorities. Making things even more difficult for the state senate was the controversy over the President of the Senate, Michelle Fishbach, simultaneously serving as lieutenant governor. Again, there were litigation over that. And of course, as many of you on this panel are well aware, it's an election year in which every member of the House of Representatives and the governor's office is up. And so that all makes for a very difficult stew of getting anything done at the legislature. And so with that, the Coalition entered really with some, I think, sort of modest and what I think were realistic goals, that we would focus on a bonding bill and position issues for discussion in the election and for the twenty nineteen legislative session. So the Coalition emphasized a bonding bill focused on water and infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, continue to educate legislators on the high cost of regulatory compliance issues, continued our constant discussion of local government aid and our constant pressing on that issue, monitor the corridors of commerce program, which of course was very important to Highway twenty-three, and I'll touch on that back and forth later, continue city street funding advocacy. And then first for us this year is to start to highlight the childcare shortage in Greater Minnesota and begin to advance solutions. This is something that the Coalition is just dipping its toe into last year, we're going to be doing more work over the interim and come with some proposals in the twenty nineteen session. And so really, it was a matter of push for infrastructure through a bonding bill and then kind of tee up and position issues for discussion during the election season and next session. So in terms of advancing water and wastewater infrastructure, MPCA estimates that over the next twenty years, there's about a five billion dollar shortfall in terms of funding for these issues. And so every year in the bonding bill, there is funds put in to the Public Facilities Authority grant and loan programs. Last year, CGMC worked extensively on this issue, and that led to the largest amount of funding in a bonding bill for those programs in twenty seventeen. For twenty eighteen, the governor proposed, and we supported, a hundred and sixty-seven million dollars for these grant and loan programs. The chief authors were Representative Verdahl, who's the capital investment chair, which is always a good thing when you've got the chair carrying your bill, and Senator Dames, who represents a district near Redwood Falls and Marshall and that area. And it matched, as I said, the governor's proposal. We also worked on a supplemental grant program to help pay for the high costs where PFA programs are not currently adequate. There are caps, both in terms of dollars and percentage of the project that PFA will pay for, and pretty much the most you can currently get out of those unless you get some sort of special legislation is seven or eight million dollars. And so if you are looking at a twenty, thirty, hundred million dollar project, seven or eight million dollars does not necessarily go far to defray the cost of that program. As I said, current PFA programs are capped, often leave cities struggling to figure out how to pay for these things. And so we developed a supplemental grant program, put on our thinking caps, introduced legislation in which the state would pay at least half the project cost or buy down the project cost so that rates are no more than two times the metro average, whichever is more. So we looked at, how much are they paying in the metro for their wastewater rates? And we thought, okay, folks in Greater Minnesota should not have to pay two times more than that. Again, Representative Verdahl was our chief author in the House, and Senator Westrom from Alexandria was our chief author in the Senate. This was really a discussion piece to really start to get at, these things cost a lot of money when cities have to make these upgrades or comply with, with regulations. And so we wanted to make sure that the legislature understood that and had a sense for kind of what these costs were. It was interesting, as we got along, like I said, we made this our priority, we highlighted it in a pre-session press conference call on CGMC priorities, and so it's a very efficient way for us to reach out to statewide media, put out a blast, have them call into a conference call. We sit in a conference room in our office, Councilwoman Nelson has joined us in the past for those, and we highlight what are our issues. And the infrastructure issue was one of the main ones that we discussed. Various guest columns throughout the session in various newspapers across the state, both ones penned out of our office and in assisting members who wanted to pen their own. We did a mid-session press conference focused on wastewater and water issues specifically at the legislature, where we brought in a number of our members, told their story about their communities and the challenges that they faced paying for these programs. The House Ways and Means Capital Investment and the Senate Capital Investment Committees held hearings in which they specifically asked CGMC to testify, to discuss, to come and talk, to bring in cities that are challenged with these issues. And over the course of the session, CGMC really became the sort of go-to organization in terms of helping the legislature understand and think through solutions to these questions and problems in terms of paying for infrastructure. In terms of the outcome, like I said, we were advocating for a hundred and sixty-seven million dollars in funding for those programs. We were able to get a hundred and twenty-three million dollars for these programs in the bonding bill. The funding includes new appropriation bonds that are backed by the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund, i.e. the lottery proceeds. This was not necessarily uncontroversial, as it was a new use for those funds, but, you know, we'll take the money to help pay for these, these programs. And despite significant interest from the legislature, the administration and their opposition basically killed any discussion or movement on the supplemental grant program. We expect, though, because of the high costs of these facilities and the upgrades, that that supplemental grant program is something that we're going to be bringing to the legislature again in some form. Our environmental advocacy yields results in other areas, and I won't go through the whole thing, I will just note that in your packet, there is a front and back page of all the different things that we worked on related to the environment, whether it was the funding itself for the wastewater programs, the supplemental grant program, the consideration of compliance schedules to reflect debt loads, so as MPCA is saying, you have to do this by X, they now have to factor in what is your debt schedule on your current and future facilities, increased disclosures to permit holders, all sorts of things that add to the transparency in the process and allowing for communities to advocate for themselves. On transportation, lots of drama, especially towards the end of the, end of the session and in this part of the state, you're well aware of some of it. The senate and the house initially, at the beginning of session, took very different approaches to transportation and their supplemental budget. The senate put no funds in for roads in terms of their supplemental budget bill. The house had funding for roads out of the surplus. CGMC, we were very supportive of the house bill, ongoing funding for city streets for small cities, those under five thousand who don't get the benefit of any of the MSA funds that you discussed earlier today during your budget presentation. And then there was a hundred and fifty-five million dollars for the corridors of commerce program. One of the things that was posited during the legislative session was a constitutional amendment that would dedicate a portion of the sales tax that's attributable to sales from auto parts to roads and bridges. That money is currently dedicated to the general fund. And so if you constitutionally wall off those funds, you have a shortfall in your general fund programs. If it was adding new money into the system, we probably would have been supported, but since it takes existing money and walls it off constitutionally so that the legislature can't get it anymore, creating shortfalls potentially in other areas, like local government aid, for instance, is our chief concern, we opposed that piece of legislation. We also opposed it because frankly, the legislature, by the time they got around to this discussion, had spent the surplus, had been discussing a pretty expensive tax bill, and then they wanted to send it to the voters to say, hey, wall off all of this other money, but we haven't accounted necessarily for where it's going to come from. We didn't think that was necessarily a wise way to budget. We were joined in our concern on this by a number of educational groups, a number of health and human services groups, public employee unions and the like, who likewise thought that this constitutional amendment was a bad idea. It did pass the house, but it stalled out in the senate tax committee and never had a hearing on the senate floor. Depending on the makeup of the legislature this next legislative session, it is possible that this constitutional amendment idea will come back. Remember that a constitutional amendment is only passed by the legislature, does not require a governor's signature. So if you've got one party that is in control of the legislature, they theoretically could pass a constitutional amendment without any input from the governor. So corridors of commerce, we call this, if at first you don't succeed, try again. So in twenty seventeen, there was four hundred million dollars put into the corridors of commerce program. This program, of course, helps fund those interregional connecting corridors like Highway twenty-three, like Highway twenty-four. 23, like Highway 24 in southern Minnesota, that facilitate the flow of goods and services around our state. So $400 million was put in in 2017. The legislature also said, MinDOT, you have to come up with a much more transparent, data-driven way of allocating these funds, show your work, and score in a way that is transparent and has some validity to it. So as they were putting together their scoring system, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, along with numerous other entities around the state, commented on MinDOT's proposal. One of the things that we generated a lot of comments and advocacy from our communities on was a proposal and discussion about upsetting the normal 50-50 split rural metro of these funds. Historically, although it's not in statute, a 50-50 split of funds between rural and metro had been observed. There were a number of interests, especially in the metro area, that wanted to tip the balance more in favor of the metro area. And so we sent out an action alert, I think this was in November, December, and generated a lot of advocacy out of greater Minnesota. MinDOT told us that that was the single most commented item in their whole discussion on quarters of commerce was this 50-50 split. And so we were able to maintain that 50-50 split on behalf of rural Minnesota. Now, MinDOT announces its projects May 1st. So this was the split 2013 through 2015 of where the funds went, as you can see, kind of all over the state. Now, the awards are announced May 1st, so three weeks to go in the legislative session. And if you squint really hard at the metro area, you can see the two greater Minnesota projects. Now, our transportation lobbyist Shane, as he's watching this press conferences, gets out his phone and does a little Google search. How far are these projects from, say, US Bank Stadium? Every one of those $400 million, whether they were supposed to be allocated to greater Minnesota or the metro, got spent within 40 miles of US Bank Stadium. That is not what we had in mind when we thought of rural and metro split, and I don't think that's what a lot of the legislature had in mind. So at this point, the coalition raises holy hell with the legislature. And we were able to generate a lot of commentary in newspapers, a lot of comments from our members through a action alert that we sent. And so there was clearly an issue. Shane and I met with the Commissioner of Transportation shortly after this, and he was like, yeah, we gotta, there's gotta be some fix to this. The two projects that were next on the priority list in terms of greater Minnesota were Highway 14 and then Highway 23. And so through stirring up a bunch of folks at the legislature, they were able to get $400 million allocated to the bonding bill for the quarters of commerce project. And we worked on writing language that would allocate this in a way that made sense so that Highway 14 got some money, Highway 23 got some money, and then one project in the metro area got some money. But this is an example, and it's especially pertinent for this part of the state, but I think it's an example generally of when greater Minnesota is not treated fairly, of the coalition being there to jump into action. And so whether it's in transportation funding or local government aid, or the balance in the bonding bill, that's the sort of work that we do, and I think this is a good example of it. And so as you see here, the final selections, Highway 14 gets some money, Highway 23 gets some money, and those projects will go forward. So on the tax side of things, which of course is where the local government aid discussion happens, the discussion and the focus on the federal tax changes really crowded out any discussion of local government aid. We introduced our pieces of legislation, and we introduced a couple of tweaks to the formula that help greater Minnesota generally. But we knew that the main discussion was going to be on, how do you align Minnesota's tax system with the federal system? Our goal, as it's been for a while, is to get back to the 2002 level appropriation of $30.5 million. Representative Paul Anderson and Senator Bill Weber were our chief authors. We also introduced some legislation to update the need factors, which kind of gives each one of our cities a little bit of boost in the amount of LGA that they would get over time as you put more money into the program. So a quick look at Wilmer LGA history. Two things that I would note about this, well, maybe three things. First off is, in terms of where you are as a city, you are ahead of where you're at where at in 2002 by about $300,000 or so. The other thing that really stood out to me as I looked at this graph the other day is just the very up and down nature of it for the city of Wilmer. Other cities, the line is a little bit flatter across with a dip, you know, in 2003 with everyone else, but doesn't necessarily see the zigzagging up and down. You see the 2010, 2011, 2012 time period, that's when the coalition worked on a freeze to local government aid appropriation so that every city got what they would have gotten the year before. And that is because had the formula been left to its own devices, cities like Wilmer and other regional centers would have actually lost money over time, hundreds of thousand dollars a year, as it turns out. You see the big change from 2013 to 2014, that's when we updated the formula, and were successful in getting another $80 million in the program. And then since then, there have been a couple of small bumps in the appropriation overall. So this last legislative session, the legislation that the CGMC introduced, you can see current law for 2019, you're getting about $4.62 million. Under our proposal, you would have gotten basically another $200,000. And so that's going to be the basis of the discussion that we start, that we launch at the legislature for 2019, is a bill that would probably get you somewhere in the neighborhood of about $200,000 extra for 2020 if we were successful. Childcare, I mentioned that this was one area that we just started to dip our toes in. The CGMC, along with our sister organization, the Greater Minnesota Partnership, which is a group of EDAs, local chambers of commerce, higher education, individual businesses, and the initiative funds, we worked with stakeholders to bring attention to the growing childcare shortage and its impact on economic growth. We held a conference call with folks statewide in September and invited kind of all comers, whoever wanted to call in, to call in. Well, when we got 75 RSVPs a year ago on the Thursday before Labor Day, we knew that we were sort of on to an issue that people really cared about. And so since then, we've been discussing this with legislators, we've been talking about it in the media, and we've been trying to get our own brains around, what can our role be in helping to deal with the childcare shortage in greater Minnesota? It's a complicated, multifaceted, multi-angled problem. But a couple of things that we did is, one, we advocated for additional grant funding to expand and build childcare facilities through the bonding bill. So like some of our other grant programs, one of the issues is just a lack of facilities or the lack of ability to rehab a facility to make it compliant with regulations. So we introduced some legislation that would have provided some dollars for that. There's a current grant program through DEED that Representative Baker actually has been very instrumental in. We worked on securing funding for that, unfortunately was vetoed in the supplemental budget. And then we also worked with the initiative foundations on some legislation that they had for a grant program that would distribute money around the state to the initiative funds to help train up home childcare providers. How do you run your childcare business? How can you make it work? What are the regulatory issues that you're going to have to contend with? How do you make sure that you get parent-aware, quality-rated, so that you can have access to subsidies? Those types of things. Again, didn't necessarily get a lot of traction on that this legislative session, but this is our first foray into this issue, and I think we're going to continue to work on it as we are hearing, like I said, that it is one of the significant things that a lot of communities feel is holding them back in terms of their economic growth, making sure that they've got families who want to come and move there. That, along with housing, is their kind of dual challenges in that regard. Also, on the infrastructure front, the Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, BDPI, this program helps pay for the public infrastructure related to business expansion or bringing new businesses to town. A lot of communities have used this when building out their industrial parks. There's money in this fund. If you have a project that you think could be qualified, apply for this money. It's allocated on a rolling basis, but every now and again, the bucket needs to be refilled. And so last year, we were successful in getting $12 million into the BDPI program. This year, we were successful in getting $5 million. And so every year, a little bit of money needs to go into this fund to keep it replenished. A lot of communities use this fund, these funds really well. If you have a project, please look into using it. So as I wrap up here, as you all breathe a sigh of relief, 2019 will be a year of significant change, right? We're going to have a new governor after eight years of Governor Dayton. He's not seeking another term. There's strong candidates on both the DFL and GOP sides. We now know who the last two standing are in terms of Tim Walz and Jeff Johnson. Election in the house could flip the majority. Senate special election, because they had that one seat there that was held by Michelle Fishbach, who resigned to run for lieutenant, resigned to be lieutenant governor and then run as lieutenant governor with Tim Pawlenty. So there's a special election in the senate in November that could flip the majority of the senate. And so you are potentially dealing with new majorities in the legislature, or at least a lot of new legislators who need to be educated on our issues. It's a budget year, and so there will be a lot of discussion about the big picture, local government aid, economic development, all the rest of it. And right now, it's hard to predict a surplus or a deficit at this point, but signs do seem to point towards, if I had to guess now, if I had to say, put $5 down on deficit or a surplus, I'd put $5 on surplus. And so there will be funds to tussle over in that regard. So we will be active during the election season. Now, obviously, the CGMC is nonpartisan, we don't take sides in elections, but we do engage with candidates. And one of the things that we did, and I did not include this in your packet because it's 27 pages, is we put out, but you can get it on our website, we did put out a packet of issues that are important for greater Minnesota communities. So we go through in some detail for legislative candidates, how does the local government aid program work? Why do we have it? How does it equalize between communities? We go through the economic development challenges and tools like BDPI that the legislature funds, the various programs that are funded through the PFA, and the challenges with environmental regulatory issues, all of that in here for candidates. Every candidate who was on the ballot in the August primary got one of these in the mail at the end of June. All the gubernatorial candidates also got one of these. We also held at our conference in Mankato gubernatorial candidate forum, three out of the five folks running at that point came. So it was Representative Walz, Representative Aaron Murphy, and then Commissioner Jeff Johnson. So at least the two that ended up clearing the hurdle were there. We had 500 people, our members, and then members of the Mankato community and business community there. It was webcast live, and so it was a good event. And it was a good event to highlight CGMC as an organization, as well as our issues. We do legislative candidate forums, we'll probably do three or five this year in hotly contested seats, where again, we work with one of the host cities in that area and invite the legislative candidates in and ask them questions pertinent to our agenda. What do you think about local government aid? What's your plan for transportation? What's your plan for economic development in greater Minnesota? Again, a good way to engage with candidates, highlight our work in the public, and get a head start on the next legislative sessions. And then we monitor candidate statements on key issues. If there are candidates out there saying wrong things about local government aid, we will say, hey, this is wrong, here is right. As the discussion goes forward, we depreciate some more careful statements on your part. Again, we don't take sides, but we are actively engaged in the discussion. So our opportunities for the next session, push an LGA increase, obviously, because it is a budget year, we'll have a new governor, I think we'll have a surplus, develop a comprehensive package on the childcare shortage, continue to make progress on water and wastewater infrastructure, and then continue to work on city street funding, both for those cities under 5,000. But we've also had proposals on those larger cities to supplement the MSA program. And so those are the items that I anticipate that we'll be working on the next legislative session. Our fall conference is coming up in Alexandria, November 15th and 16th. That's where we set our legislative agenda for the next year and kind of get into the nitty-gritty of what are we going to propose, what will some of the bills look like. It'll be after the election, so there will be a lot of discussion about who won and why, and what does it mean. Legislative Action Day in St. Paul, where we bring our members to the Capitol, brief you on the issues, set you loose on your legislators, and then have dinner afterwards at Mancini's and regale each other with tales of our day. And then our summer conference next summer is going to be in Bemidji. They have a great event center right on the lake. They're excited to host all of you, and we hope you'll be able to join us. With that, I really appreciate your time, and I'm absolutely happy to take any questions you might have.
Bradley, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the good work that you do with the coalition, and also how you represent Wilmer well. So councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Peterson?
You know, I would just like to address the childcare issue just a little bit, and this is a prime example of government overrun. We have made it so cumbersome for our childcare providers, and in the Wilmer area, most of those are in-home childcare providers. We don't have a lot of facilities, the YMCA has a facility here in town, and then there's one at the Midwest Technology Campus as well. But we've made it so restrictive for our young parents who want to stay home with their own children and then bring in a couple additional children to help supplement their income. We've just made it so cumbersome, it's just terrible. And they continue to put down more and more rules, more and more regulations, they show up and do more and more inspections, and with no outcomes. I mean, the outcomes are totally zero. I mean, they can't prove that they're doing anything better than they were doing before. So, you know, anything you can do to prevent this foolishness is certainly something that I would support and would encourage you guys to work on. I happen to have a number of childcare providers that live in my neighborhood. As a matter of fact, I have one that lives right across the street. She's in her last year because of all the crazy rules that are being put down. Now, she's going to continue working as a childcare provider, but she's not going to do it during the summertime.
Sure.
And there's a critical need, you know, I hear from people coming wanting to get into the workforce, they can't get into the workforce because they can't find childcare. And it's a crisis in greater Minnesota, you know, and they can't charge the same rates they charge down in the metro area. And, you know, it might be fine to put all these rules on the people down in the metro, but, you know, as you know, and the council knows and the public knows, I served as a paramedic before I entered into this realm. And so I've seen the bad sides of what can happen in bad childcare centers. But that's very, very few and far between, so don't paint everybody with the same brush. And I'm for less government interaction in most areas of our lives, and this is certainly one of them where they're overreaching. And then seeing them on my soapbox, let me get on the deal of water, wastewater. We spent over $80 million on our wastewater treatment facility, only to be told by the MPCA, by again, some foolish rules that somebody dreamt up during the night, that have no substantiated documented outcomes, which you're well aware of, that you have to have different rules. They told us three years ago that we were going to put another $20 million into our wastewater treatment plant to meet those needs, after we just spent over $80 million. I talked with our municipal utilities general manager, that number's now over $100 million to meet the new rules, just for the city of Wilmer. And we just spent 80, I think it was 86 million on our wastewater treatment plant. So when you're looking at these issues of government overreach and things that don't have any scientific basis to them, you're right on, and you're doing the right stuff. So keep up the good work. So I'll get off my soapbox now. People don't like me on my soapbox, but on these two issues, I think it's important.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor. And on the childcare issue, your comments echo a lot of what we've been hearing around the state, whether it's in southern Minnesota or up on the Iron Range. There's a, just a sense, and we need to do some work to sort of put our fingers on the specifics, but there is a sense that, you know, part of what is really the headwind on it is the regulatory issue, especially when you're talking about the child, the home childcare providers. On the water issue, you know, you were talking about salty discharge earlier this evening. That is the next discussion front in terms of where the state regulation is going. And I was in the city of Fairmont last Monday, and, you know, I was, had an opportunity to sit with the mayor and the administrator before the meeting and ask them, you know, you have any environmental water concerns? Chloride, salty discharge. That was the thing that, before I got done asking my question, was the thing that came out of his mouth, and it was an object of discussion here earlier today. And so that is the next front on the discussion. And as the piece in your packet that I distributed that shows, you know, all the things that we've been working on, some successfully, some still in progress, there's no end to the issues that need to be addressed. Because I think as stewards of the public good, both the public finances and the public health and the public well-being, you want to make sure that you're getting what you're paying for, and that if there needs to be upgrades to a plant, if there needs to be regulation, that they are having a beneficial effect. And there are times when that is a serious question, and that's where the coalition has been trying to step in and really probe and really make sure that there's a lot of transparency around these discussions, so that when these rules are promulgated and when these permits are issued, we know that the money that's being spent on them is having a beneficial effect for the health and well-being of all of our citizens and our environment as well.
Thank you. Now, I understand that you have now, you started out with one person working on the wastewater, water quality issues, and now, my understanding is you're looking at hiring or you have?
Well, so our firm is Well, so our firm has been expanding the staff that we have working on it. We've always had kind of one person lobbying it. We recently, we've always had kind of one attorney working on it, working with cities on their permits and that sort of thing. We have added another attorney to work on the permitting and regulatory side of it, because I think, you know, one, there is just a lot of work to be done around the state on these issues, and two, that there are a lot of communities who are becoming more aware of their own predicament and aware of their own rights and aware of their own voice when it comes to deciding that, you know, maybe we do need to have a more robust discussion with the MPCA rather than simply accept certain permits and certainly accept certain regulations. Maybe we do need to have a voice in questioning and probing and really getting at the nub of these issues.
Sure. And when you and I talked earlier today, I'd mentioned the fact of one of our fines that we received from the MPCA. And, you know, this is another example. I mean, here we have a builder in town trying to do the right thing. We have a crazy, wild rainstorm, 100-year event. The silt fence is down for a matter of a few hours, and the MPCA's answer to that is not to come out and thank our staff for doing a good job of getting that silt fence put back up, but to come and slap us with a fine. Now, I'm all about water quality and doing the right thing, but you know, when you've got a builder that's trying to make sure that he's got a building that's protected, we've got waterways that we're trying to protect as well, our staff go out and do a good job, you know, our public work staff are on top of that, in a matter of, you know, less than three hours, from what I was told, we correct the problem, and then they fine us. That's how they thank us. I mean, that's ridiculous, but I'll get off my soapbox now. So, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Brad. You're always informative when you come here. It's, you speak a lot and a long time, but it's, I didn't see anybody fall asleep, and it's very informative. The general suggestion that I hear from individuals is get government off our back. Well, we need to say the same thing for the cities. Get government off our back. I mean, just what he mentioned with the MPCA, I don't know why they're doing it, but it's a, and you say, you pay for what you get. Well, we're paying more and more every year for more government than we don't want it. You can bring that message back to us.
Absolutely. I understand.
Thank you for your report. Thank you for the work that you do. You know, we pay you a lot of money to lobby for us, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate the good work that you do for us and continue serving and representing us well. And Councilmember Nelson does a good job serving on your board. I hear a lot of compliments across the state. So thank you for allowing her to serve in that position as well.
Absolutely. And thank you for your time this evening, and thank you for your support of the Coalition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a consideration of a public hearing for an Oregon Amendment City Charter Section 4.03, Mr. Halliday. Well, there's a familiar face, and we're not at Rockin' Robbins.
Oh, that's too bad. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kevin Halliday, current chairman of the Wilmer Charter Commission. Subsequent to a request and correspondence with the mayor and the mayor's ad hoc recreation committee, there was a variety of recommendations to make some amendments to Section 403 of the Wilmer City Charter. Initially, it starts with a name change, and as you see the ordinance draft before you, going to be called the Park and Recreation Board, administratively taking through leisure services throughout the section and replaced it with recreation. And then the makeup of the board is recommended to be seven people, an odd number to break any ties if there's any votes and so forth. And it is simply an ordinance here that administratively makes those changes. It is our recommendation that you hold a hearing and take public testimony on this. Subsequent to that, if it is adopted, it'll be enforced 90 days after that adoption.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes, thank you for your work, by the way. I was just wondering why the change from leisure services to a recreation board?
I don't have enough reasons for that, because it was a summary of a letter from the recreation board that the mayor put together, and that was their recommendation. It was no large concern for the Charter Commission, so it's really a rubber stamping of their recommendation. Okay. If the mayor could address that, I guess it'd be better.
I'll address it. Staff also came forward, you know, we have a recreation department. We have now a director, all the terminology for all of that, the department, the people that are working under the department, we're all using that terminology. So we thought we should probably make sure it's congruent with where we were going with those department names.
Thank you.
And I might add, we went back in history, and it was actually a Park and Recreation Board two charter revisions ago. So we are returning to the roots of what it was called before.
Okay. Well, I think it's good to know that. Thank you.
Additional comments from the council?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for 7:01 PM on October 1st, 2018.
Second? Motion made in second. Additional discussion? Only in favor of the motion, signified by Saint Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Just as a reminder, this takes a unanimous vote from the council. So if you're not going to be here for the next meeting, get to the city administrator ASAP so we can reschedule this, because we do need, we need eight affirmative votes. The mayor does not vote on this.
Two meetings from now.
I'm sorry, two meetings from now. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So what's the date?
One, October 1.
October 1, October 1.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we may want to reschedule that. I have a work obligation out of town that night for the, that week, actually.
So we could take the public hearing, and then it would have 30 days to take the final vote, correct?
That's correct. The council must vote. You're under a statutory process now, so we're considering tonight the introduction of the ordinance. Once you give it the public hearing, you have 30 days under statute to vote and to enact that it has to be 8-0 unanimous.
Correct. So that would mean that the 15th would be, will everybody be here the 15th?
The other option would be to attend electronically. I'll just throw that out for consideration.
If the hearing is on October 1st, you would basically have one opportunity after the 1st at a regular meeting to have everyone present and voting. And if neither October 1st nor October 15th would work, we can talk about how do we continue the public hearing again? Because I think you need to stick to the October 1st date to meet other statutory timelines.
Sure.
But if necessary, you could always, instead of closing the hearing on the 1st, you could always adjourn it. And I think you did that for one of these charter amendments recently.
How about attending remotely?
That's, yeah, that's a possibility as well, assuming the technological capacity is.
Well, that would be the first item on the agenda. Mr. Holland, can we look, have staff look into that again, please?
The electronic voting?
No, the electronic attendance of the meeting. Okay.
Okay.
So I believe that takes care of our business. Kevin, thank you for your work. Thanks for documenting it the way that it should be documented. So thank you very much. Next, we have consideration of the civic center lease for the Wilmer Warhawks for the 2018-19 hockey season. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mayor, member of the councils. Tonight, we're seeking consideration of the Warhawk lease agreement for the 2018-2019 hockey season. This will be the third year that the Warhawks have been in Wilmer. Each year prior to that lease have been on a one-year agreement. So tonight, we're seeking approval for a renewal for the lease agreement for the term of one year for the Wilmer Warhawks.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion made in second. To approve the recommendation of staff to approve the lease as presented and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Just one question. I was curious what the rent was last year, if we had an increase this year or?
There was no increase. It's still.
The same amount?
Same amount.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This is a roll call.
Councilmember Fagerley?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Swantus?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmis?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Plauman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Rob, maybe one thing, I know that with the Stingers, we do an extended lease, and now that they have a track record behind them, maybe it's something we could consider for next year.
Yep, I'll bring that up to the owners.
Extended lease. So, yeah. Thank you on, thank the Warhawks for being here in Wilmer, so I know it's good entertainment.
Will do.
You bet. Next, we have the city hall air testing. Mr. Christensen.
Mayor, members of the council, I actually went back to the work session notes, in case you're wondering where I'm getting the information from, from earlier tonight regarding the air testing at city hall. We solicited a number of quotes, multiple quotes for, to do air quality, lead, mold, asbestos quotes for, within city hall. We only received one back. The price is $2,825. That includes one lead air sample per floor, two mold samples per floor, two asbestos samples per floor, two swab wipes per floor for each material, and a hygienist would be running pumps for two days. That does not include, if we want to rush and ship overnight, for 225 extra dollars. Recommendation would be to authorize the services with MAC, it's M-A-A-C, in the amount of $2,825.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Motion made in second. To approve the services for MAC for doing the air testing at city hall. Discussion, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, is this company also in the business of remediation of these things? Of air quality or?
Councilmember Christensen, I believe that is true, because they were involved in the entire testing and sampling, and also some of the remediation when we did the flood a year ago at city hall.
It would seem to me to be a conflict of interest, just for the fact that they find something and we can fix it, you know?
Well, now, the tests, of course, go to somebody else. So they gather all the information and then ship it off to the lab.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Swantus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I again would just repeat my concern that we be ready to play an active role in doing something with the results. And I think then that the budget should reflect some dollars that we're ready to put into it also, whether that be for preparing a new space, renting a new space, whether that's moving forward with the new city hall. But assuming that there are going to be positive results to this, I would just hope that we're ready to move forward with it.
Additional discussion? Does this have to be a resolution because we're spending money?
I think it's just a motion to approve a contract.
In favor of the motion, signified by Saint Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have the city administrator's comments. Mr. Holland?
Why is he coming up? Well, I'm coming up. This isn't on the schedule, but I started thinking about it. I said, you know, two weeks ago, I stood up here and introduced Britta, our new community center manager, and I haven't introduced Rob tonight. So Rob, if you could come up here. I know that you all know him. He's been our long-term civic center manager, but I wanted to introduce him to the public in case they didn't know, that he is a longtime city employee. He, you know, went through the interview process with us, and we're glad to have him on board. Also, I will note that you can put this on your calendar on the 10th of September at 1:30. We're going to have a welcoming party for him and Britta. And I, you know, I wrote down CC, so I don't know if that's community center or civic center.
Civic center.
Community center. So you're all welcome to come out and have some punch and cake, and we'll welcome both of them aboard. But again, we're glad to have him here. I don't know if you want to say anything? I've got a couple other things to announce, or?
Just happy to be here.
Okay. Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Also, I wanted to point out, a great job, you know, to the finance director, to Shannon, Amelia, and to Carol. You know, they do this budget year in, year out. You know, we think it's very cumbersome, but they work on it all year round. And we never mentioned their names, and so tonight, I wanted to mention their names and thank them for putting all this information together, putting the charts together, making sure it's correct. You know, it's not over. We're only halfway through, really. But I'm going to try to motivate them by saying, great job now, right? So congratulations to them. Also, if you didn't see in my notes, I want to point out that the lights are up at Bakerfield. I was assured that they are working. So I haven't seen it myself, but I was told they are working. And also, over the next two weeks, we're going to be putting the playground in at Miller and other places, too. So we're going to get them in this month, and so that's great news. And so I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Under the mayor's announcements, I had mentioned in an email I sent to everybody on Friday that I was attending a meeting on cycling without age. And cycling without age is a project through ChangeX of Minnesota, and we're looking at, well, I shouldn't say, I think we're past the looking stage. We're to the implementation stage of buying five bikes, they're rickshaws, they're actually called tri-shaws because the people ride in the front of it. And it's used in facilities that are unable to, people are unable to ride bike themselves, but they would still like to have the wind in their hair, the wind in their face. And so I'm going to be asking the council to support us being a partner with Bethesda. Bethesda will be doing all of the legwork, so to speak, for this project. Rob and I attended a meeting there this morning, and we'll be looking at bringing five of these rickshaws, tri-shaws into Wilmer. Bethesda will house them, ensure them, make sure they're maintained. We'll have an enclosed trailer, so that if a service group wants to go and pick up these bikes, they would have to be trained in their use to be a pilot. But once you were trained, you could pick up the trailer, take it to a facility where you would like to ride bike. If that's riding bike up to the Dairy Queen up in Spicer or Wilmer, or going out to Robins Island and riding around the park and the Dean Park, or whatever it is, we certainly would encourage that to happen. So this is moving very quickly. I think our first meeting on, it was maybe two weeks ago, was the first meeting we had, and this is moving quite quickly. So we have an opportunity as the city to be a partner in what that would allow us to do then, and Rob can talk a little bit about it, but if he chooses to. But it would, we would be a partner with Bethesda. There's not a financial commitment, but there may be at some point a request for us to be financial host applicant for a grant that might come up, that the city, Wilmer, then would be that, who would receive the grant, and that may be coming up within the next month or so. So, Rob, I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that, but I think as part of the recreation department, you see a tremendous, this would be a tremendous asset for a community, something to be great. I've gone around and talked to a lot of people in the last two weeks about this, and everybody I talked to was just super excited about it. I was at the meeting at Bethesda today, and they were telling us that one of the residents there, they were on the bike this last week, and they were giving rides to different people through the Bethesda complex. And they said they had to have the next person ride it, and they were like, no, it's still my turn. I want a longer turn. So, so the people are very, very engaged. It's multi-generational, multicultural. You know, we take it for granted to be able to jump on a bike and go for a ride. But we had Rice Hospital or Caris Health people there today. We're talking about sentimental journey, and that's people that are toward the end of their life, would have an opportunity to take this and go for one last bike ride if that was their choice. So I really am a supporter of this. It was introduced into our community over a year ago, but it's just kind of taken legs here within the last probably two to three weeks. So we're putting a brochure together, and I would ask the council if it would be okay for us to be listed as one of the partners on that brochure. So normally, I know we don't take motions at this point, but I talked to the So normally, I know we don't take motions at this point, but I talked to the city administrator right before the meeting started and said, you know, "We had this meeting this morning and didn't have any chance to get anything prepared, but i- if the council's willing to do something like that, we certainly could do that." But, so, Councilmember Swantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, was at a meeting out of town about a month ago, and the woman who created this program actually spoke at this event and talked about this. And I think it is such a cool thing, if you could hear the success stories, um, from all over the place. It's, it really is an amazing thing. So I would make a motion that we partner, uh, in, in this, uh, opportunity.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, at this point, there's no financial commitment. It's just that we would have our name as being one of the co, co, uh, co-partners in it. So additional discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
I had the privilege of going with the mayor a couple of weeks ago to one of the meetings, um, and they actually took the mayor and I for a ride, and then allowed us to do a little pedaling. And it's quite amazing. Um, it was great. Um, it's great to see Bethesda take the lead with that and also reach out to the other organizations that serve, um, those populations, the, of people that want to be out and about. And so I'm supportive of that, and I'm, um, pleased that we can help in some format. Um, I know they're working hard to raise funds, and I think it speaks highly of our community too, to embrace this. And, uh, so I just want to say thanks to Bethesda and, and thanks, um, for bringing it to us, um, to, um, work with them.
Certainly. Uh, Rob and I had an opportunity to meet with the administrator from Rice Hosp-, uh, Rice Care Center. And I started telling her a little bit about this project, and she got real excited and said, "You know, I was at an event here a year ago, and they were talking about this deal." And she said, you know, "It's where the, where the residents ride on the front and the person sits behind." And so I called Rob over, and I said, "Rob," I said, "I think this, I think they're talking about the same thing." Well, they've been trying to fundraise for this thing for a long time, but it takes a lot of money, and it takes a lot of people to come alongside of each other. So they're going to contact Bethesda tomorrow, and they want to be a partner as well. So, uh, this is very exciting, so. I know I'm not supposed to get excited about these things, but, you know, we do a lot of stuff for kids, but we don't do a lot for seniors, and this is something for our seniors, and I really think this is a great thing, so. Anyways, so there's a motion that's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Uh, next, uh, councilmember announcements. Councilmember Mesky, we'll start with you tonight.
Um, Wilmer's youth is back to school, so I would say, uh, please be cautious out there of our small ones and, uh, obey the bus when you see that, so.
Councilmember Plowman.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Just congratulations to the two city employees that happened to be named Sarah, and they were both at work today. They got married this weekend.
Wow.
Crazy, thus.
Yeah. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a reminder, put on your calendar the November 15th and six, 15th and 16th for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. And also, a lot of the information they talked about, um, they're on Facebook, they're on Twitter, they're on, um, uh, go out and check it out. Um, their website has a lot of great information, um, and it pertains to the city of Wilmer, um, the things that they're working on. So I just want to say thanks again, um, and don't hesitate to, uh, sign up to go. It's great to interact with the other communities and learn lots of new things. Um, Mr. Okens was at the conference in Mankato and, um, the public-private partnerships, a lot of the different things that cities are working on. It's, um, it's fun to hear, and I think there's opportunities for us to learn from, so.
Councilmember Christensen.
Winter is coming.